I need a motion to come out of closed session, please.
So move.
I need a second. All in favor, show by raising your right hand. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We appreciate you being here. And I need a pledge of allegiance, please, by Mr. West.
Join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will have an update, a CTE update. It's Mrs. Bolton. House here. All right. Dr. Dunsmore, will you give us an update on the Carver Heights?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. As most of you are aware, Carver Heights was put on the list for the innovative school district takeover by the state. From the last meeting, they listed seven criteria which they used to make that decision. We're in the process and speaking to those seven criteria with our response. As I had shared with our Board of Commissioners, there's always options. And at this point, our opinion is, and that of our legal team, they didn't follow their own statutes in what they are doing in this case. And quite frankly, we want to hold their toes to the fire. I have been in contact with Ms. Barnes and some of the community groups that I would like to give a shout out for the amount of people who showed up at Carver Heights that evening and spoke on our behalf and the work that's being done behind the scenes for our students. And I just want everybody to know that we are going to fight for our school. We are going to fix this and we're going to keep it in Wayne County or do everything we can in order to make that happen. There's some things going this week that we're going to get out in front of with the newspapers and get information to our state board members so they understand our objections to some of the criteria they used and how they didn't follow their own guidelines.
All right, thank you very much. This time, we need approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, if I would, I would like to make two changes. We do need an amendment for a future meeting to discuss our minority businesses. And I would like to add that as an item F under that. And also, item G under the consent agenda, the CTE surplus computers to Jones County. We had offered those computers to Jones County and in speaking with their superintendent and the folks down there because of the damage to several of their buildings and the outpouring of help and support, they didn't need them at this time. They did thank us for our thoughts and just politely declined because right now they didn't have anywhere to use them and weren't sure what they could do with them. And they're not back in school. So I would ask if that be removed at this time of item G under the consent agenda.
Okay, and then LM, we're going to pool.
And also policies L and M, policy number 2123 and policy 7130, to pool off those for further discussion. So I would suggest the policies be moved to G and H under, I guess that's not board action, this will be discussion. We can do the consent agenda and then just do the discussion on those two policies.
Okay. Now, at this time, we need a vote for the amendment to the agenda and to our consent vote.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the amendments of F under board action being minority business and then item G under consent agenda to remove at this particular time. And that we pull items L and M for further discussion instead of having consent for a second round.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. All right. It's Mrs. Bolton. Dr. Manning, will you stand in for her?
Good evening. Mrs. Bolton House is accompanying a student to the national conference. So she was out of town this evening. She had presented at the curriculum committee, the CTE update that included having a public safety program at three high schools, Goldsboro High School, Southern Wayne High School, and Rosewood High School. Goldsboro High School would continue to use its public safety position in the firefighter academy as has been done for several years. And Southern Wayne High School will continue with the EMS program as has been done for several years. And their request is for the Rosewood High School position to be law enforcement. The principal, Mrs. Rogers, had surveyed her students and found that she had many students who were interested in law enforcement, as many as they were interested in other options, and was pleased that that would allow for three different branches of public safety at three of our high schools with the contingency that students who were interested in one program that wasn't offered at their high school could request, as they do, for many programs to be allowed to attend the high school where the program that they are interested in is being offered.
Now, that is update. Do we need to vote on that?
I think that MOU will come to the board once they're ready to hire and then grant it with the police force. So that would be.
All right.
And then there was one additional item on that. They have a student who's requesting to take classes at the University of Mount Olive. And so CNI is requesting permission to lead an MOU with the University of Mount Olive to allow students to receive dual credit for those classes. That would provide some career and college promise opportunities for students in that area of the county because Wayne Community College is such a drive for students.
Yeah. Okay. Now, she's asking though our permission to proceed with the MOU.
Yes, ma'am.
So we need to vote on that as a board?
Yes.
We do, all right. I need a motion, please.
So move.
Second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Say what now?
Clarity on the motion, what is the actual motion?
We are. Well, the motion is that we are giving her the direction.
We're going to create a MOU.
Yeah, to work with Mount Olive and create the MOU.
And MOU for law enforcement also.
Was it law enforcement? Okay.
Well, to allow for dual.
Yeah.
It's not specific to law enforcement, is it?
The MOU with law enforcement would allow for a law enforcement branch of public safety at Rosewood High School. And so the same way that Goldsboro has an MOU with the Goldsboro Fire Department, you have to have an MOU with a sponsoring agency. So that's one MOU request. The other MOU request is to have one with the University of Mount Olive to allow for dual credit courses.
Right.
So it's two different.
My question would be relative to the MOU for the dual credits.
Yes, sir.
That would be opened up to any student, not just the one that is making the request at this present time.
That would certainly be my understanding. Yes.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
I understand this is a MOU, but would there not be a need for a written articulation agreement?
If we read into it later and we don't like it, we can vote against it?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, and now we need to have a motion for developing an MOU and a.
Which I just.
May or may not be able to respond to this. And I heard you mention it, but I wanted to be clear that even if they don't have that one at their school.
Yes, sir, provided that there's room in the program.
So it has some space available?
For example, at Goldsboro High School, the specific discussion in curriculum committee was that a Goldsboro High School student would not be bumped from a fire academy class at Goldsboro High School to make room for a student that's from a different school because those programs have caps. But if there were space available, students from other schools would be admitted. It was actually, we talked about two different contingencies. One is when students provide their own transportation and they travel from one school to another. And of course, Goldsboro right now has a different calendar than the other schools.
Any other questions or concerns? All right, all in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right. And now we need to vote and approve the agenda.
No, we did that.
We did that, okay.
Approval of minutes.
Approval of the minutes, October 1st, 2018.
I'll make a motion we approve the minute, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I need a second.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right. Approval of closed session minutes, October 1st, 2018.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve and release the closed session minutes from October the 1st.
Is that good? We can't, does it got personal?
This is October 1st. You know, we did have a meeting on the 18th, so we're talking about the 1st of October.
Okay, October 1st is good.
Okay.
I second the motion.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed, the same? Dr. Dunsmore, you have a parent and family engagement month proclamation.
Yes, Madam Chairman, thank you. This is a parent and family engagement month. I would ask that we accept a proclamation that reads as the following. Whereas we recognize that the children of Wayne County are our most valuable resource and that a sound education is the key to producing the next generation of successful, productive, and conscientious citizens. And whereas the parents are their child's first and most influential teachers and all parents have hopes and goals for their children. And whereas it is important for schools, early learning settings, and the community to welcome families, to plan for parent and family engagement, and to provide meaningful ways for parents to be involved in their child's learning. And whereas when schools, parents, families, and communities work together in partnership, our children succeed. And whereas the Wayne County Board of Education partners with those that support, enhance, and celebrate the growth of our children, including various faith and community-based organizations, colleges, and universities to promote ideas, education, and resources to support parents and families in the full participation of the educational journey of their children. And whereas it is appropriate that the Wayne County Board of Education pauses to recognize the outstanding contributions made by parents and family of the children who foster a love of learning and to recognize educators who acknowledge the importance of their parent and family engagement and take action to make it an integral part of the school community. Now therefore, we, the Wayne County Board of Education, Wayne County Public Schools, do hereby proclaim November 2018 as Parent and Family Engagement Month. In the county of Wayne, we urge all citizens to join us in the recognition of this important role of parents that they have in their children's lives, education, and school community dated this 22nd day of October in the year 2018 by Ms. Patricia A. Burden, Chair of the Board, and Michael Dunsmore, Secretary of the Board.
Dr. Dunsmore, I'd like to call up Mrs. Carolyn Brown. We have representatives here.
I'm some of our district parent advisory council.
Fantastic. Ms. Brown, could you introduce them for the board, please, in case they don't know who these fine ladies are?
So this is Ms. Marquesha Elifai. Hi, how are you? We're representatives for our pre-K children. And this is Ms. Ochoa, who has one of our students out at Rockton. And she's representing their school on our parent advisory council.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
For your service to our district. All right.
Do we need to adopt that proclamation?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the proclamation for parent and family engagement month.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Okay, thank you very much. And at this time, we need a motion to approve our nomination of Mr. Richard Pridgen, who will be serving on the Business Advisory Council, representing the Board of Education.
I'll make the nomination for Mr. Pridgen, serve on the board council.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Well, he'll count as a yes, he's not opposing.
I meant for opposing.
Why is everybody shooting arrows at me? Well, that's okay, yeah, I'll be glad to serve.
All right, at this time, I need for the board to give me a date and time for us to hold a public hearing regarding businesses with minorities. We, I would like to suggest that that is held separate from our board meetings because it would be early in the afternoon and many people will be working. So we need to pick a date and time prior to our November board meeting.
Which is what date?
I believe the 19th, hang on my calendar. Is it 26? Okay, thank you. November 26th. Madam Chair, the week prior is the Thanksgiving holiday. Other than that, Monday, if you want to do Monday, the 19th.
What time are we looking at?
I won't be here.
Just in general, though, are we looking to do it evening?
About 6:30, 6 o'clock?
The week prior to that, the 15th.
The 19th.
The 15th and 16th is a Thursday and Friday. Board members, you will be at the statewide conference earlier in that week, but the Thursday and Friday, 15th through the 16th would be a possibility if you would like to do it then.
15th is better for me, but I know it's not all about me.
The 15th is a Thursday. We could do 7:00 PM, Ms. Burton, if you think that would be a good time.
What time?
7:00.
I'd be fine with that.
Mr. Henderson?
Fine with me.
Ms. Smith?
I'm good.
All right.
Where's this going to be held at, Madam Chair?
It will be here.
Okay.
In the boardroom.
What date did you say?
So we're saying November 15th.
Thursday, November 15th.
At 7:00 PM.
And I will get a notice out to board members tomorrow and just so everybody can have that in your calendars.
Did I miss something? What's the purpose of having it at 7:00 AM? We got people coming to them.
Hopefully, we would have people coming to it. It gives them an opportunity to speak before us regarding our inclusion of.
Is that the only order of business for that moment?
Yes. It is just for the public hearing.
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so it is November 15th, 7:00 PM, public hearing.
If you want to do, I believe we have a public comment. If you want to do that prior to moving on.
All right. Mr. Smith?
Okay. The Wayne County Board of Education requests to appear before the board. The Wayne County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. If you wish to appear before the board, please review the following procedures. Appearance request forms are available to the public at the receptionist desk in the lobby 30 minutes prior to the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak must place their appearance request form along with any handouts in the basket located at the receptionist's desk in the lobby. The basket will be collected at 5:00 PM, and only those who have an appearance request form in the basket will be allowed to speak. Public comments are scheduled to take place at 5:30 PM. Presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The chairperson shall call time on any presentation which exceeds the three-minute time limit. Organizations or groups wishing to speak about a particular topic may be asked to reduce the time of each individual or use a spokesperson to share comments on behalf of their organization or group. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. No presentation shall include any complaint, criticism, or negative comments regarding the conduct or performance of identified school personnel. No presentation shall include information about a particular student which is privileged and confidential under state and federal privacy laws. First up, we have Mr. Darren Flowers of Fremont, North Carolina, not representing an organization wishing to speak about the classrooms at Fremont Stars Elementary. Mr. Flowers.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to inquire as to the status of the classrooms at Fremont Stars. A couple of years ago, this board identified building construction needs, presented them to the county commissioners. The county commissioners funded those needs, and included in those needs were classrooms for Fremont Stars. Since that time, your staff met with the town board staff, Fremont Town Board, and they discussed the construction of those classrooms. Since that time, we've heard almost nothing about those classrooms. It's my understanding that Meadow Lane is under construction, that Northwest is now in the bid process, and that Southern Wayne High School is in the pre-bid process. We're here to inquire as to the status of those classrooms. I have been to the commissioners and made the same request. I was coming to you first, but the storm kept me home. I met with facilities committee, but because of your structure, you do not commit conversations at the facilities committee. So I sat there quietly and did not get a chance to ask my question. If I'd asked it there, I probably would not be here asking it here. But that is the reason for being here. I put that I'm representing myself, but I am actually representing the community because this is becoming a community concern over the lack of talk about what the status is. The least we could do is know who to talk with to find out what their status is. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Keith Copeland.
That's what I asked you.
Oh, okay. And he wishes to speak regarding the stop, the ISD takeover. Mr. Copeland?
Yes, distinguished board members. Can't see anybody's eyes right now, I'm wondering what's going on with that. Oh, I see eyes, that's good. Now I know I have your attention. I'm still waiting to hear what's the plan, what's the fight? We are ready to fight, the community is ready to fight this ISD takeover. We so frequently hear about the federal government coming in and taking over what the state wants to do. And now the state is coming in, taking over what our local government may want to do. So I'm still waiting to hear what the plan is. Are y'all with this or not, or what are you going to do? Because we, as a community, we need to hear that. You may be talking about it, but if we don't read it in the paper, or we don't hear you say it, that kind of leaves the community out there. And we've said once before, we need transparency. And so we want people to talk about this plan that we have because the community doesn't want people coming in from the outside experimenting again with their children. And I believe that the teachers that you have in place, if you give them enough support and resources, they could do the job. And believe me, don't think it's just that one school because the plan is for it to spread. And it will spread, and I'm not for, you know, anything happening to those schools. But there are people out in the community who say, hey, just shut it down. All right? Y'all know what happens if it shuts down, right? Those kids got to go somewhere. I'm not for that because I realize that some of those other schools may not be the best place for some of the students who need a little bit more coming along, nurturing, and support. So we want to hear something from this board about what is the plan? What do you want to do? What are you going to do in regards to this takeover? I know it's an election year, but we want to hear some voices. That's all I have to say.
All right. Okay. Now it is time for us to vote on the consent agenda or we will discuss those two items that were pooled first and then move forward from there. Policy 2123, board members' opportunity for development. Dr. Mason, can you address that, please?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, board members. The, we'll start with policy 2123. This policy was brought back to us and brought to our attention that we needed to revisit this policy to make the amendment that you see in the second paragraph. This was discussed in our policy committee meeting where we revised the board member's legal requirement to receive a minimum of 12 hours of training every two years. And then, as you see, we amended the areas with the minimum two hours of ethics education within 12 months. And then within 12 months after each subsequent election or appointment to office. And then the final sentence there, the ethics education required under this paragraph may be counted towards the annual 12-hour training requirement. And so these are a war discussed in our policy committee meeting with those necessary changes.
And this is just bringing us in compliance with state law?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve policy 2123.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
There is.
Okay.
You made the statement that this was brought before the committee. Who brought it before the committee?
Actually, Ms. Strickland brought it back to our attention that we needed to revisit this. And Ms. Strickland, would you like to elaborate a little on that?
Yes, this was actually something that back when Ms. Pridgen was still employed by the board, not retired, that it came up because we were having to correct, it was another grammatical error from the state that had rolled around. And the state policy had changed at that point, and we had an open discussion about it. And it was voted on to my memory, if I've dreamed it, that's okay. But to my memory, we voted on it then to change it to every two years to be in compliance. And then when this policy came in front of us a month or two ago for a different tweak, I can't remember what it was, it caught my attention that it had not been changed. So I have read through the past minutes and cannot find it. So we could just go back to the minutes and change it to the revised date. So felt it was important to bring it back in front of the board to make sure it was done properly.
Okay. I will finish my comments by saying that I am. I will finish my comments by saying that I am against it. I think that we should get twelve hours of continuing ed of some type each year. We've done that ever since I've been on the board. But then some board members have not. Some board members have signed up for things, they've gone to things and left and come back home and not fulfilled those hours. And I feel like if you're going to spend the county's money, or spend the school system's money, you need to sit in there and you need to get your education. That's my personal opinion. Okay? I also have an opinion that the more, the more you are going and in tune with the education and the trends that are going on across the nation and across the country, the better suited you are to come back and be prepared to innovate ideas in our own system and that. And also, the more familiar you are with some of the laws and how monies are controlled from school. But I'm against it. I feel like that we should get twelve hours each year as we always have or always were supposed to. And so we can be a better informed board. But y'all can vote the way you want to, but I'm voting against it.
Dr. Mason?
Yes, ma'am.
This is not something that we brought up for a change. This came to us from the School Board Association. They have changed their requirements. Is that what it is?
I can, I can speak to that. The state law requires that it's twelve hours every two years. Your policy had a requirement of every year, twelve hours. You all can continue the twelve hours every year, but you must meet at least twelve every two years.
So that's what this part is saying?
The change would have it twelve hours every two years. You currently have it twelve hours every year.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
I just want a question of clarification. Are you, because this is a first reading, are you saying that you wanted to prove that as a second reading?
Yes.
Yes. And truthfully, the only reason I brought it up, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna echo what Mr. Pritchard said. The whole point of being on the Board of Education is to stay abreast with the current trends, the current research. And I think it is a tremendous disservice if we're sitting on this board and we don't want to learn anything new every year. We want to wait every two years. I know what the policy says at state level, but I can't wrap my mind around not wanting to stay up on the latest trends in education. So that's all I have to say about that.
I'm gonna say this. I'm not sure who the fingers are being pointed at on this board, but I'm gonna speak from my perspective. I get my time. Whether they tell me I have to have two hours or twenty-two hours, I get far more than that. And I kind of take exception to an insinuation is being made. I mean, I don't know who the fingers are being pointed at. I don't know how many hours any of you got. I'm speaking for myself. I get my time. So.
I feel certain it's probably coming, it's probably coming my way, but I've never signed up for anything that I did not attend. But when this was discussed, and I would love to find the video because I know we passed it as a board three and a half years ago. But when this came to the board then, I had my hours and knowing that it had not changed or thinking that everything had been corrected in policy, no, I didn't get twelve hours last year. I had twelve hours, actually, I had probably twenty-five or thirty the first year and then twenty or so the second year. So that covered me for the full time. So it's not lack of education. I think a lot of times, I'm trying to save money. And so if I can go to the state conference or the national conference and get all of my hours in and get all the education that covers these topics, there's no reason for me to take beach trips to get a few extra hours in for a different year. So that was why this came back up was because I would lay my hand on the Bible that I have in memory that we have already passed this, but I cannot find it. But no, I did not get my hours last year because I thought this was changed. So but as far as paying for conferences and not attending, no.
Well, like I said, I just wanted to clear that up with whoever. But I might also add that not only do we need to get hours, we need to attend school functions. I'll put that before the board. And I do that as well. We have a lot who don't.
I think we are steering away from the point.
Don't sit there and point a finger at somebody then.
I did not point a finger.
I'm not saying you. I'm just saying.
But I think we have moved away from what we're here for. Now, it came to us from the School Board Association.
Yes, ma'am.
If we do not want to follow their requirements, we always have a right to upgrade it. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So if the board wants to be required, if board members want to be required to earn twelve hours each year, then we can vote to say that. If, whether we, whether we, if we go to a conference each year, you're gonna earn twelve hours. So some of us are going when we don't have to have the twelve hours, but we are going to learn about new and different things. So if you want to do it the way that it has been done in the past, which was every year, fine. If we don't want to do that, then we vote not to change the policy. So at this point in time, do I have a motion for the policy as it is stated?
You had a motion and a second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, then I had discussion. So at this time, if you are in favor of changing our board policy to indicate that we earn twelve hours every two years, then let's have a show of hands. Okay. Are those opposed? All right.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we make this a first reading on policy 2123 to give Mr. Flowers an opportunity to return for the next board meeting and vote on it again.
I'll second.
All right.
Will Mr. Flowers be seated at the next board meeting when this vote takes place?
He will because the board meeting is gonna exchange seats until December.
Madam Chair, I've got a question relative to the policy.
Okay.
Can you tell me the difference between these two statements? Each board member will fulfill the legal requirement to receive a minimum of twelve hours of training every two years. And then it says the ethics education required under this paragraph may be counted towards the annual twelve-hour training requirement. So you've got contradiction in policy.
That would need to be corrected.
That would have to be corrected because it means that it would just count.
It would be the biannual.
Mm-hmm. It would count biannual. All right, so now we have a motion on the floor to.
First reading.
To put this as a first reading and vote on it in November. Any other discussion?
Board attorney, could you advise us on that since our first, our first vote was a second reading?
So your first vote was no action because it was split. So now you're saying you're going to bring it back for a first reading at the next board meeting at which Mr. Flowers would have been sat.
Well, now she's saying that this would be the first reading.
So then the second reading would be when Mr. Flowers is here.
Okay.
That's how you currently have it. This is the first reading. Nothing changed. You're bringing it back for a second reading.
All right, the motion as you are.
Or the question that I would have for you is just remove the motion and it would come back up next month anyway, since it was a three-three split.
But then if you're not gonna have, if you're gonna vote on it next month as a first reading and you're wasting, I mean, it's gonna be two more meetings before you do it.
What's the best way to handle that?
My recommendation is to bring it next month, first reading, start all over.
Okay, then I rescind my motion.
Do you rescind yours? You second. Okay. Now, moving forward, do we have another motion?
Policy 7130 was the next one that was pulled.
All right, so wait a minute. Wait a minute. I want clarification at this time.
Sure.
So because it did not pass or fail.
Right.
All right, we start over again.
Right.
So it will come back as a first reading?
Correct.
It will come back next month as a first reading. Is that necessary? Why can't it come back as a second reading?
To make the change that Mr. Henderson mentioned, there will be a first reading with the ethics time.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll leave it as it is. All right, now, policy 7130, licensure.
Okay. This is a board policy that came down as well from the state board to be amended under section B. Exception to unlicensed sure requirements where you see the adjunct CTE instructors, where it states that an unlicensed individual who meets that established criteria for a specific CTE instructor may be employed. That has been added as well as under number three. Strike formal for former. I think that was just a clerical error, if that's correct, Attorney Carneta, as well with that.
Correct.
7130A, under section E, bold paragraph, adding the language in bold, continuing professional license as well has been added. And then under 7130B, we have changed H to G. And then the revised information there for the legal reference. And the rest remains the same. Those are the changes from the state board. And that, again, Attorney Carneta, I think that was just some language clarification because of the changes that have come from the licensure information, just to get us in line with those new updates.
That's correct.
All right. I need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve 7130 as a second read.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All right. All in favor of approving policy 7130 as a second reading, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I would like to have a motion for the approval, a consent vote for.
A consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials and/or items are routine business or have been thoroughly discussed in committee meetings open to the public and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item included on the consent agenda. If a board member wants separate consideration of any item, it may be removed by request. Madam Chair, I'd like to recuse myself from this vote. I have a cousin who is being considered for a position and I don't want to be seen as improper about voting rights.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Smith. At this time, could I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda from items B through K?
With the exception of G.
With the exception of G, right. We moved it.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as outlined through items B through K with the exception of G.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, any discussions? All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as indicated, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much. All right. We don't have a spotlight, so we are now at. Comments. All right, Mr. Henderson, let us start with you.
You started with me the last time.
All right, Mr. West, let us start with you.
I don't have any comments, Madam Chair.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, first of all, tip my hat to Dr. Harold for his exhaustive research on the conditions of our current facilities and the research that he's doing towards that. Hopefully, within the next month or two, we will be able to examine all the schools would have been able to examine the conditions of every school in Wayne County and be better prepared to make some decisions as it looks to our construction needs in the county. So, Dr. Harold, I do want to say thank you for that, that hard work, and I know it's been very exhaustive. I did also attend a curriculum committee meeting this past week. And one of the issues that came up was our, our plan for our low-performing schools. I would like to ask Dr. Ishi if she would be prepared at some point in time in the near future to give the board a look at that low-performing school's plan so that we can identify areas of concern. I'd also like to commend Dr. Ms. Manning for all of her work in coming in and taking over the role as the advanced air coordinator for the district. I know she met with the district chairs and the facility chairs last week. She did an awesome job in trying to get us prepared for our advanced ed review that is coming up in March. I would ask all board members that if you receive notification of advanced ed meeting in which you are a member, I would ask that you please make every effort to attend those meetings because I'm certain that as the review teams come, they will be interviewing us as board members. And nothing looks worse than to have a board member that does not know exactly what's going on in the school system. So I want to, again, ask all of the board members to be very cognizant of that and be very participatory in that process as well. And lastly, I would like to just make some remarks to Mr. Copeland relative to the ISD takeover. I think that you can feel rest, you can be rest assured that our board is going to do everything in our poss, in our power to try to make sure that the school system, Carver Heights, Carver Heights School remains here. But however, you know that that's not necessarily all of our doing. But we are developing plans, as Dr. Dunsmore has mentioned earlier, to kind of address that and get on the front end of this and hopefully make some, make some strides in overturning that decision.
I just wanted to thank everybody that was able to go to the fair. I wasn't able to go out there two nights, but I did make it out there quite a bit. But anyway, it was nice to, to see a lot of the exhibits that our students did. And we've got a lot of talent also in our, in our community, in our county. The other thing I wanted to say is for everybody to get out and vote. I know it's during that time period and a lot of us are busy at the polls. But anyway, it is everybody's duty to vote and I would certainly hope that everybody in our community will do so. The other thing I've got really is a question. And we had two good speakers tonight. And I know we don't normally comment, but we had two good questions that were posed to us by community members. And these communities want to hear something because I am getting phone calls from the northern part of the county. And also, I'm getting phone calls about Carver as well, or Carver Heights. And I would really love to see, I mean, is there any way we can respond partially to that tonight while they are here so that they can carry a message back to their community? Or would that be out of line? And I know we normally don't at public speaking, but I think there are people present in the room that have some answers that can certainly answer those things. Okay, thank you.
I was gonna say no comments, but Mr. Harold, thank you for, or Dr. Harold, excuse me, thank you for the work that you have done on our facilities assessment. I have been dreading, yet looking forward to seeing that for a while now. And the county does need to know that there are some severe needs and we know it. And now we have it down and we are taking steps to address it. Those are my comments.
Mr. Smith? All right. My comment is that I know that Dr. Manning had her first official meeting with the chairs for advanced ed. And it is my understanding that within two weeks' period of time, they should be having their committee meetings. they should be having their committee meetings. So I'm asking board members to please check your emails because many times that is the way that we are notified about these meetings and their locations and time. The next thing that I'm gonna say is, as a board, if we have concerns about our performance as a board, whatever it may be, we have a right to develop plans, policies to address those concerns. And I think that we might need to consider that in terms of attending workshops, conferences, meetings here locally, and as well as activities in support of our students. So that is something I would like for you all to think about, and then we can move toward through policy committee to address that concern, rather than to do it here.
Thank you.
Dr. Dunsmore, it's all you.
Thank you. Just to follow up for Mr. Copeland, we are aggressively fighting this. There are things that we've been working behind the scenes very closely with our legal team, as I already said, with Ms. Barnes. We wanted to get our facts together and get everything putting this politically correct. I want to do our facts checks before we go public with anything that they're gonna shoot full of holes. Our actual statements are gonna be rolling out this week through NC Policy Watch, as well as statewide through the media. And we are addressing each of those seven concerns, of which, as I said earlier, I'm very disappointed and upset that they made a listing of items of why we were chosen, and they didn't follow their own legislative mandate of how they do that. So I don't, I'm not an attorney, I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn last night, but just as a layman, I think we have a real, real strong case. I'm confident if we get that information to our state board members, they're gonna see what we're capable of doing. And I think what you said about our children and our staff, I don't need to repeat because you're spot on. Ms. Barnes and I are gonna be attending a state forum Wednesday morning. And believe me, we're vehemently fighting this. As far as Fremont and, Mr. Flowers, I know we have talked before. You're more than welcome to call me anytime. We are waiting the engineering studies. As we've said many times, if we put a hammer on that building, we're required to bring it up to code. And some of the issues is where some of those discharge pipes for the sewage out of that building are going. We have four separate pipes, two of which, when we did the smoke runs, Dr. Harold, we're not sure where those pipes are going. One of our concerns is we move forward with those classrooms, and the county commissioners, obviously, they want us to be very prudent with public funds. We have some prices out at Northwest. We're prepared to go out to bid at Fremont, but I have to have those engineering studies done exactly what we're getting into. And if we do a freestanding building up there, what all requirements go into that behind the scenes? Those monies were allocated, they're still there. They can't be used for anything else until we resolve these questions. But I don't want to speak for Dr. Harold, but we'd be more than happy to sit down with you at any time and go over that in more detail.
Yes, we took a different avenue tonight, so that opens the door for you.
I have been trying to follow the rules the best I can. My concern is, if we talk about the sewer lines etc., we're basically talking about existing classrooms. We're talking about a new set of classrooms where that's what came out of the meeting we had in Fremont, which would be independent of anything dealing with the 23 building.
That's, and that's what I just said. Our problem is a freestanding building because of the rules and regulations. We have to look at cafeteria space, bathrooms, and some other things. The cost projections, obviously, attaching to the 1923 building. On the face of it, would be less expensive. If we start doing a freestanding building, we get into some areas that we have to add to that project. And we're trying to price all that out and be able to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges.
The only thing I want to remind everyone when we talk about the 23 building, we have a 25 building in this school system as well. And I would hope that we repeat the same concerns when we deal with the 25 building that we are with the 23 building. I've talked about years.
Thank you.
We are at a loss, quite frankly, as to why the 23 building is a factor in the addition of, I'm assuming, standalone classrooms that could be connected, even if you're connected to an existing sewer line. The sewer would cost you no more with 20 lines as it does with one because we charge you for the water you use and we use a form and convert that to sewer. But anyway, I kept you long enough. I appreciate this courtesy, and I know this will be I'll try to convey it back, but the concern is growing, and I don't think we need to have issues out there. You have too good a situation to start putting limitations on it and misunderstandings and misconceptions. I've heard nothing but rumors, and every rumor I hear proves to be false and dead. And that's the life we live in today. If you can make a rumor, it's gonna be a bad rumor, and we're trying to stay away from that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, but I'm gonna, I would like to ask Mr. Flowers and Dr. Dunsmore and Dr. Harold if they could schedule a meeting, not a committee meeting, but a meeting with Mr. Flowers to go into specific details about his concerns and the concerns that we may have as a district. So I would like that to happen. Okay. Mr. Pridgen?
The reason I asked for that tonight is I've received, in the last two weeks, I've received, I've received seven different phone calls from people in Fremont, and every one of them had a different story. And it's like Mr. Flower said, it doesn't need to be the rumors out there floating around, but it's gotten to the point that the rumors are floating around from that we're gonna close the school, all the way to we're not gonna build the buildings and keep the school like it is to, you know, and it's, it's very difficult as a board member, especially when you're not serving on the facilities committee, to know what the, I mean, we get our minutes, but it's, we don't know exactly what the discussion has been in the facilities meeting as far as, you know, moving along with that. But we do get phone calls, and I'm sure some of the other board members have gotten some phone calls too. But I just wanted to, I just, I feel like we need to be more in the communication phase of where we're at and why and that type of thing. And I think Mr. Flowers is a great representative from Fremont to be able to spread the word of where we're at with that situation. And I actually had even recommended to someone to talk about Mr. Flowers this past week about, see if he could come to the board meeting and see if he could gather information, so.
If I may, I have a ticket done by myself because I don't want to be talking about the community meeting and all that stuff. I have nothing to say from any of those things, for the interest of that level.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much, Mr. Flowers.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn?
Always, I don't have to ask for that one. All right, I need a second though.
I'll second.
All right. All right, all in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Thank you very much.